Order for order and Mr. Ken Manley is going to lead us all in the prayer of the flag. Five thirty-two.
Allegedly we should salute the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. I thank you for giving us the opportunity to come together and do what is best for the city of Ballinger and its citizens. Guide us through this process. Thank you for the rain, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ken. Okay, at this time any citizen who desires to address the City Council on a matter of not conclusion on the agenda may do so at this time. Per the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. All presentations are subject to a three-minute time limit. I don't believe we had anybody sign up right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move along. And at this time, item number four, City Council will consider approval of the minutes of the May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve your minutes from May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Number five, discuss and consider approval of joint election contract with Romos County for the November second, twenty-twenty-one election.
Mayor, Council, much like other jurisdictions, they come together and hold their, have somebody that runs the elections, and historically, you know, done it through Romos County. And so it is coming up to that time of year again for municipal elections in November, and so staff seeks the approval to go ahead and enter into that agreement.
I'm gonna make a motion to enter that agreement.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, City Council, will receive a report from Elaine Husky on the Hotter Than Hell BBQ set for June twenty-fifth to the twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, in past years, the city has provided tables, chairs, and that kind of stuff. I just wondered if that's still going to be doable this year. I've already ordered six quarter pies, one extra dumplings, a light bar, and generator. We want to close the middle road again, which I think we've all agreed on, and make it one way around again instead of two-way traffic. There's not room for traffic. And also, in years past, for the van, we had to borrow trailers, and I discovered from another function that someone else had borrowed city trailers. So I wondered if there was any way.
We just have a form in that.
One.
So they, we've got two trailers for different heights, so if you wanted to borrow one, one did match another person that donated to the prior event. So I don't know if you could get the same, but we do have one of either side that could be used. And we've got our semi-trailer, so we've been more than willing to accommodate any way that we can. We just need to sit down and figure out the logistics for you guys.
In the past, we've used semi-truck trailers, the fly beds. That's what we've used in the past.
And also, I think Tony talked to someone with the city, maybe at our last board meeting, about maybe moving one or two of those rocks at the end closer to the dam. And we could put probably three more cookers in there, not trailers, but maybe a tent and just a barbecue pit. Probably wouldn't have to move all the rocks, just a couple of them, maybe.
I'm sure we can work that out, Ken.
On the generator, you said lights?
Mm-hmm.
Have you guys just traditionally used like the portable light plants in the past?
I think that's what they are, isn't it?
It's a generator that has the.
Like a pole.
Like a pole that you crank up, and then has the light bar up on top.
Okay.
The city has normally provided two of those every year for us.
Okay. No problem.
Okay. And also, we will meet here tomorrow at five forty-five if any of you want to sit in on that, just to see where we are. But when it comes down to actually what we need, is it okay just to let Bonita make the list as far as like council tables and chairs and stuff?
Just do it with this Bonita or Becky, since she's in public work, she'll have the part style things for you. But we'll each take care of it.
Okay, we'll be here tomorrow at five forty-five. Okay. See ya.
Excellent.
Thank you.
As of right now, we have fifty cookers, fifty cooking teams.
How many did you have last year?
I think forty-four. We have fifty that have said yes and that they would be here, and then we have another three or four from the previous years that haven't filled out paperwork yet, so we're looking, we're paying fifty to fifty coaches.
So we'd kind of like to add a few more from the dam if we can.
That's great.
We do have a mechanical bull coming this year working on the.
We want to see Brian.
No, I want to see Lauren.
I'd be like, hooty-doopty, nobody.
That sounds like fun. Good.
So we're trying to, you know, build a little bit more, and we have more vendors this year than in previous years, food vendors plus just odds and ends stuff.
Wow, you've been working hard. Okay, thank you. Do you guys have any questions? All right, moving on to number seven, City Council, discuss and consider request of Chamber of Commerce to host the second Stars and Stripes 5K Fun Run on June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'm going to have to see it. Is this the Justin bike? No, this is the. No, this is the Chamber Fun Run.
Okay, the Stars and Stripes, yeah.
So Second Street with the, I don't know the timing on Second Street, but in the month are they going to pay?
Maybe.
Right, probably won't be done. Okay, so I've rerouted, so that's very quick time.
Okay.
We'll just go up across. You can kind of look at that. A water station at the end of Avenue B and forth, and then turn back, and then I did talk to the park board, and they're okay with finishing in the park this year. We kind of eliminated that last year because of COVID, we didn't want everybody to be in one spot. I think it'll keep a lot of people down in the park, maybe after the run. We're not going to make them run out of park heels. Lower up the street.
Well, you have a trailer available for those that can't get back up the hill.
Maybe, yeah. Somewhere over an extra ranger.
Have Lola do that.
Yeah, well, she'll be here, so there's several of us that are going to be out, but hopefully we've got some people that are kind of set up and help. We're trying to figure out a water station, and there's some people that'll help with that. That's all I've got. I don't think we'll need any road blocked or anything. Last year went well, and quite a few runners and walkers and bicycle runners.
Yeah, because I run a few.
Yeah, and we were concerned because you never know what COVID's going to do or who's going to come, and so it was good.
Thank you all. Thank you, Sarah. Do I make a motion to? Agree?
Make a motion, we approve a Chamber of Commerce request.
I'll say your question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, number eight, City Manager has requested that we hold off on this, and so I would make a motion.
Entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion from Council to table this until our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, consider approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Ballinger and Ballinger ISD regarding the City Police Department providing services to the Independent School District and terms under which those services are to be provided.
Mayor, Council, in years past, the city has had what was called a memorandum of understanding, but that existed between the school district and the city for years. And with the changes that have taken place and whatnot, it's time to go ahead and refresh signatures and get it into current language, and so it's no longer a memorandum of understanding, it's an interlocal agreement. And so what we're seeking is allowing, go ahead and enter into that interlocal agreement, just like we're doing with City Coleman, Brady, and so on and so forth. We're just doing it with the school district, so when they have various things that they need assistance with, we're there to assist them, and we can do so.
What are the basic terms of the agreement?
They basically, we're there to support one another, whatever means they have, and like the officers that go up there and work, like football games, they compensate those officers. You know, if we have something that we're going to throw extra officers at it, say for a particular football game, if there's a rival issue going on or something like that, then they pay for what they normally have, and we pick up the tab for the additional support. It's just one of those, you know, UIO requires them to cover some certain activities, and so if for some reason something comes up where we need to supplement that, we can. If they wish to bring an officer in for, say, to help teach a criminal justice class or something like that, they're picking up that. And so it's just a, it's just a means by which we work together as, you know, because everybody's all taxpayer dollars. And so let's just cross in the teeths and not in the eyes for liability purposes.
So it's not doing anything new, it's just continuing on?
Yes, it's sort of being an, well, it's an interlocal agreement.
Okay.
It's the same thing we've been doing for years, to work one another.
Do I make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number ten, City Council will receive the City Manager's report, and he will give the status of current projects, first board of building standard meetings set for June tenth, city pool status, vector control program, and budget for financial year twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor. Status of current projects, as of Friday, Roberts Construction had wrapped up the water main project, has made all their service cuts, and so that's, Friday they went ahead and poured the slurry to kill off the old lines, so they have been killed. We now have them moving on to a project outside of the initial project, and we're trying to pick us some other areas that are needing to be addressed. So they've wrapped that area up, and we're done with Roberts Construction on the water main side. Moving along with the pavement side of things, they're still working the bases, and are we still waiting for full fill?
No, that was taken care of.
That was taken care of, okay. So we're hoping with the temperatures being what they are set to be for this week and most of next, and reduce rain chances, they'll be able to kick it back into high gear and get moving on the pavement side of things, working the base and getting everything ready to move forward. So that's where we're at with strain sense. As the report mentions in your agenda, the first board of building standards will meet Thursday for their first meeting to receive their charge and lay out what exactly it is, what the mission is going to look like, and we'll have that going starting Thursday. We've already sent letters out, if I remember correctly. So far, most of the replies have been, they're wanting a year or two or three to come into compliance, and we've already politely expressed them there, and have to come to the committee hearing and visit and see what the ruling of the board is, but we're not looking to give those extended grace periods. It's, most of these properties have been there too long, so we're moving on that.
At what time does this begin?
Five-thirty, is that correct?
Yes.
Five-thirty. I'm going to save the city pool status for just a second, but Don would talk about the vector control program that we're kicking off.
So I put out in front of you a little flyer, and that's essentially just a piece of equipment that we have worked with, that's what we're requiring. So this piece of equipment is designed to use a ultrafine, atomized aerosol, not a mist, because a mist will just fall to the ground, and so this machine actually takes a blend of permethrin and mineral oil, and under a high velocity injects that into the airstream, and it makes a cloud that can be applied. So we want to do this when there's crosswinds crossing the street, and then we change the direction of the travel that we do up and down the street. Typically, we won't be doing this before nine-thirty or ten PM at night. The reason being is we want to have the atmospheric shift where the temperature flips, and you start having the ground come up, or go down instead of come up. We want to keep it as low to the ground as possible, so as we get that wind current, it carries it through into all of the low areas of vegetation and into the alleys and everything else, instead of just going up in the air and being blown off into nowhere without treating the problems that we have. The plan that we're going with is a product that is designed to attack the mosquitoes themselves, it doesn't leave a residual, it's only effective for two to four hours, and it comes in and it kills the mosquito totally when it has contact with it, whether it's airborne or it's set on vegetation. In addition to this, to try and get the longer, more appropriate kill patterns on the mosquito, we're going to be using a larvicide as well. And what we'll do there is identify common areas where there's standing water, and then with inspection, we'll look for that larva, and once we see it in an area, we'll treat that with the prescribed dose of larvicide to kill that off, and that will have some residual effect as well. Between the two, they say we can have anywhere from a five-day to forty-five-day period where we don't see a huge population of mosquitoes, but just like everything, there's a ratio that we have to be satisfied with, where if you're outside for eight hours and you see two mosquitoes, that we consider that acceptable. Instead of being outside for eight hours and you see hundreds of them, we've, well, it's all over ourselves. So our goal is to try and mitigate as many of the live adult mosquitoes as possible while they're alive, and neutralizing them in a rapid fashion, and while using a friendly chemical that's got a high rate of efficiency. So we're currently going to be using a product called Control, K-O-N-T-R-O-L, thirty dash thirty. We're going to keep inside of whatever vehicle is applying this, copies of the MSDS and the label. We're going to have people that are either on cooperative agreement license or in-house licensure once TDA catches up with our request. And so everything will be done well above power with journals and charting to track what we've used, where we've used it, and how often we use it. We don't want to underdose, we also don't want to overdose, but we want to make sure that we're applying it in a pattern that follows trends and not just applying it because it's been seven days. Just like with an antibiotic or a painkiller or anything else, if we just can be able to throw this out there, even if it's not a need, the population here can become immune to it. So we don't want to hear that happen. I do have copies up here of the fact labels and the material safety data sheets and everything for both chemicals, the larvicide and the permethrin-based adulticide that we're using. And I've got other copies, if any of you want, about the machine. It's really not that obtrusive of a noise, so even when we're coming through the community between nine-thirty PM and three in the morning, it's going to sound like a drone just running through your neighborhood. The beauty is, instead of the old style thermal machines where you had to creep along at two or three miles an hour, we can apply at twenty miles an hour, all the way up to twenty-three miles an hour, and have the proper dosage being applied. So when you hear that hum, you're only going to hear it through your neighborhood for a matter of thirty seconds. Hopefully, it's not going to be enough to interrupt any type of sleep. We did field test it a little today without the chemical, but with the manufacturer, so everything's calibrated and ready to go. And as soon as we get conditions that are right, and we get everything aligned, we have everything ready to go on starting this treatment process. And anyone in the community that asks about it, we'll just get them to relay back to us in a courteous manner that they see a high activity area, we can go back and spot treat. The last part of this machine that sets it apart from everything else is that it's GPS based, so it will only dose the appropriate concentration per square foot that your speed, your vehicle allows it to. So if you're traveling at four miles an hour or higher, for each mile an hour that you go above four miles an hour, it's going to increase the dosage or decrease it so that we're never over saturating a specific area. In addition to that, the operator will have a control inside the cab, so if we see somebody up for a night job or riding a bike, or if we see pets out in the front yard, instead of spraying that in area, even though it's inert to humans and animals, we can turn that off as a courtesy for people who are out trying to have recreational activities, or we can protect anybody that has a concern by telling us they don't want their specific address sprayed. You have any questions on that?
Just cost?
Sorry, I'm on page four. And we're working within an open agreement with, under the Coleman agreements that we have, we're working under their licensure, and we'll also be tagged in with trucks, so you may see two, sometimes three trucks. And in the same, the rest two will go over and assist them, and that way it just makes quicker work of everything, and we're able to get in, spray, and get out.
Chad.
I'd just like to see.
Go ahead. Chad, go ahead.
I'd just like to see the safety information on it, because there's several types of permethrin that are toxic to cats. They're safe to dogs, but not for cats, and that's fine.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to see it. Per the supplier, who's the manufacturer's rep, directly from the manufacturer, he said the only thing that we have to be concerned with is aqua-life and avian species. So everything else, as far as common domesticated animals, should be safe, but I have absolutely a problem. This isn't a, what's the flower?
Chrysanthemum.
So it's not based off the chrysanthemum, this is synthetic erythroid.
But those are the ones that are typically toxic to cats, it's the synthetics.
Okay.
So we'll just make sure that we research that. What's that?
Specific to cats or dogs?
Just cats, because they actually use it as a treatment for dogs, but it's, and people will have something they think is okay, because they can put it on their dog, and they'll put it on their cat, and they'll kill their cat. So I just want to make sure that we research what type it is and make sure that it's an active.
Did you have a question?
I'm not saying anything on cats. No, I just want to look at the current, like, you know, the drugs now, just to pick up the.
It just goes in the bed, I guess.
Permethrin is not harmful to humans or to dogs typically, but it can harm some birds. I don't know about cats, I wasn't aware of that, but.
But he's got it also, we can, we'll be more careful.
Doesn't specifically, it specifically lists out marine species and arthropods and multiple other things, and it does not get into any.
Yeah, I just like to look at it.
I'll read that for us, if it's not specifically.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, John.
Under current projects, I forgot to pick up the, in there, in the last council meeting, councilman, right, brought up the issue about street maintenance, and it all ties into what we're working on right now in prioritizing the repairs of potholes and the freeze damage. And since we've had the heavy rains, we've had some additional road damage and debris. I was going to ask Becky, could you speak to the plan that you've come up with as far as mitigating what we're seeing?
So we've had, you know, a number of concerns with making sure that brush pickups done, that the potholes are taken care of. Because it's such a wide variety of issues to tackle, we split it up into a couple of different priority sectors. So essentially, we're creating a schedule to be followed as much as we can follow it based on staffing. We are looking to increase the number of staff, reviewing a couple of resumes at present over the road department or street department, to be cross-trained for both areas. But really, what we're looking at is having a brush pickup happening five days a week, trying to staff up, so the mowing is also happening five days a week with at least one body, and then adding on more bodies as we have that availability. And then having a schedule for, having a better maintained schedule for appliance pickup and large trash pickup. Also, on the other side of that, we're taking a list, we've been creating a list of road priority projects, so whether they're potholes, whether it's an extensive block or number of blocks with damage that needs to be addressed, we want to be efficient with our resources. So instead of treating sixty-five potholes along a three-block area, if there's an area of the street that needs to be addressed in a more complete fashion with replacement instead of patching, we'd like to survey the degree of damage and then appropriately decide that way. So we've created a spreadsheet with areas of concern that includes the street location, the number of blocks, the degree of damage, and then from those characteristics, we develop a recommended plan of action. So on certain areas, you know, where we're seeing five or six blocks, we're looking more into obtaining a bid for maybe a mill infill process instead of a simple pothole patching task. I think that way we can use fewer ban rates, and, you know, even if we have to take a little bit bigger of a chunk of change to fully address an issue, at least we're not repeating the process and patching a pothole only to have additional traffic and a number of potholes around the area providing a surface that doesn't really ever get fixed by a patch dog. Do you have any questions like that?
Do we have any plans to mitigate a lot of the vegetation that we have growing in our streets?
Yes, so on the opposite side of mowing, the spraying, so I've split up a schedule into brush pickup, and on the brush truck, I'm also going to have some different implements to trim back as they're moving along the streets with the brush truck, to be trimming the vegetation that's around those signs. So it's kind of a take care of everything as we're passing the same location.
So that would be like?
Go ahead.
That would be like, you know, we have several corners that you can't, they're blind corners because we can't see.
Yes.
Because of whatever's growing right there. That would be what you're talking about.
Absolutely, yes. And then another, you know, another section of that schedule, so for example, we have, you know, full-time employee number one who's on the brush truck and pruning those signs. And then on the sweeping and spraying task, we have another FTE, which would be running on the sweeper, and then also are looking into getting a, one of the poly tanks that you can see on the back of the four-wheeler or something like that.
Yeah.
Put in the sweeper, that we can also spot treat as they're moving along down the road sweeping. If we're seeing an area that really needs to be sprayed, we can hit it right there. That way, even though we have limited staff and we're looking for more individuals who are qualified, we can do the most efficient job that we possibly can with what we have. And then on opposite days, so for example, if we had Mondays and Thursdays where we're really focusing on having two people mowing, busting down the vegetation, if you will, then maybe on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, we would be focusing more on road patching. But we try to get a schedule set up so everybody can come to work a little bit more prepared, and so they can jump on their particular task and move forward without, throughout the day, so there's less guesswork, and there's minimal chance to stand around and wonder what they should be doing.
Awesome. That's good. And that's one of the reasons I brought it up, is because, you know, for twenty years, I will get to that later, if we have a schedule set down, then eventually we will get it. Thank you.
Absolutely. And if you see those sites, please do let us know. And if you see those sites, please do let us know. Call in, text my work number, I'll put it on the, put it on the priority list.
The one I noticed that the town that I was like ninth Avenue B, that road is, cannot travel very much since they built the school there, but it is very important as far as the drainage for that area goes and so they keep paving it anyway. But it's, it's half grass now.
So to wrap up the
I just had a question, do the online submission, submission forms go to you now?
Not directly, but I'm monitoring them.
Can I?
Do the citizens still need to call in, get work order for a brush pickup? Or are you just making the streets and picking it up as?
You do still need to call in. It makes it, it makes it more apparent sometimes, you know, if there are just a few limbs, it just leaves a little bit of room for error to miss something. If we have a work order, it's right in front of them and they see the limbs as we're doing it.
I'm not sure how many people really know that they're supposed to call in.
Okay. What do you think would be the best form of communication? I know we try to get the message out in a number of different forms, but if you have questions or if you have avenues of communication that you'd like to see, please let me know. I'd like to get that information as much as possible.
I have a question, just Chad, you have the online work orders. Do we have a way to respond to, when Chad says come pick up my brush, do we have a way to respond when that work order is actually been filled?
So
To the, the customer that is Short of us calling them directly or texting or emailing them, the system that we have right now is, is basically a one-way system. Okay. Current. Current. But maybe something in the future. Yes. Okay. Thanks. To finish that part off, I have been talking to the city of Coleman and Brady. They are inventorying, their street departments are very well equipped and they're willing to make that equipment available to assist us in our actual repair, pothole repair. Instead of coming in and having these little pucks, what we're looking to do is being able to bring their equipment in and we can actually cut out a section of the street and properly blast all the debris out and treat it the right way. And I think we'll see a better end product because right now they're just, they're just throwing things in the hole and you got a puck. And so that's, those are the things that we're taking advantage of in the open agreement.
Fantastic.
It is budget year again. We will be getting the budget calendar put together for you and we will be reaching out to get dates that are going to work for you for a budget workshop. And so we'll be expecting that within the next week or so. So we'll be getting moving on that. Now for the one I've read. The status of our city pool. I like the pool. I believe it gives our youth, our community an opportunity to do some things there. I've seen it other places where we've had evening events where it's like a women's night out or seniors or church group or, you know, different things like that. However, our pool is in a situation that it's going to require with the park board and maybe some other, the council may seek to put together a committee to work with us on what the community is wanting to see or achieve with their pool. If you look in the pool, you'll see spots of it that appears to be dirty. Well, it's not dirty. The lining is shot and so it's porous and we're losing water. Ground is gone from around the tiles and so we're losing water. We're losing water in and around the filtration system. We have plumbing that was fixed underneath the pool. Do you remember how long ago that was?
Two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four. So it's already failed again and so we are losing significant amount of water. And when we're losing that much water, we're also losing chemical. And it's hitting us in the pocketbook. So we can maintain and we can get through the swim season. However, when we close it down for this season, we're going to figure out what we're going to do as a community and as council, as a park board, what is it that we're going to do? Because rehabbing most of these pools and replacing the antiquated mechanics probably are just as costly as building the whole new aquatic center, to be real honest with you. So I haven't started researching that fact yet, however, that's been my experience. So I need to put that on your radar and the community's radar. Though I'm not wanting to do away with the city pool, I want to find a adequate, physical, responsible way to continue to provide a pool for the community. But what is that going to look like? Does that mean we got what we have and come back with something new and include some features that we don't have currently? Maybe a placed river, you know, some different effects. It's, right now it's completely consensual.
Mr. Freedom, maybe it's time to put in a splash pad.
Pardon?
Maybe it's time to put in a splash pad.
Well, don't think that has crossed my mind.
I mind several times.
It at least will get us through while we're trying to get, if we're not able to get the pool issued before the voters in a timely manner to be ready for the next swim season, that may be something we have to consider. If, I don't want to go a season without a pool. Where we're located at, our kids have got to have something to do. And it's not just the kids, I mean, adults take advantage of that pool as well. And so I don't want that piece of our community out of commission for too long.
We've had several cougars that have been in the coop off the last couple of years, didn't realize how good our pool was and they come from San Angelo and just, I mean, there was some that came this weekend that came to the pool on Sunday.
Exactly. And so we really want something there, we want it to be a draw. And so
I was just in Dallas Saturday at one of their community pools and they had a little lazy river about twenty yards long, of course, you know, but and then a little pool with little islands run across and just a swimming pool, kind of like we've got, but significantly smaller. And a little splash pad and even though they had a bunch of different areas for different age groups and a big slide and everything, they were using significantly less water than it is for us to put ours up. And if you look at ours and if you've ever gone out there, people just use that section kind of by the entrance and they use that by the diving ports, like most of that in the middle is empty.
So we'll be coming back and just want to put that on everybody's radar. And please, I'm open to suggestions and people that want to come together and help us figure out what we're going to do. We need to go ahead and start getting it now instead of six months from now.
All of that pool has looked bad. It's always looked good for years and there's not been a lot that's been done about it. It has to go in and completely be good.
It may be beyond, it may be beyond rehab. This is what I'm, you know, build part of the New Deal.
So pardon, it was built as part of the New Deal.
Yes, that's what it's time for, the New Deal too.
We're not going to dump that.
Sure. How hard is it to keep our chemicals in line? Safety standards. It takes a lot, it's taken a lot of time. It's pretty much on our liver.
We could have a single rainfall or shift of two points in our pH. But that's our big, with the amount of rain we've had recently and then with the constantly having to make the water up and that's one of our, that are two biggest battles. So
Okay, that's, that's all I have if you want to interconnect the section number eleven.
Okay. Number eleven, your requests for future agenda items.
Yes, there seems to be a lot of foot traffic down the alleys as of late during a midday and kind of late at night. Like see if we can do something to maybe curtail that a bit.
One thing I can tell you, we'll look at the nighttime purview ordinance, make sure it's up to speed because it has to come back before the council periodically for reviews. I'll check our dates on that and make sure that the juvenile, and that's juvenile purview. So anybody that's under the age of seventeen.
Right.
And so we'll make sure that that's in play. And then it gets a little tricky after that.
Right. Because I don't know what you've noticed, Ken, but you know, most of our foot traffic is usually thirty plus.
I just go out there and yell it.
That works sometimes, especially when you step out of the shadows. Is there any other items that anybody needs to consider or look at or kind of, you know, agenda items?
Nobody else? Okay, we'll move along. Thank you, Ken. Okay, at this time, the city council deserves the right to adjourn into executive session to discuss matters listed as authorized by Texas government code, section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with city attorney to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation, settlement offers or any matters to which the duty of the attorney to the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly reflect conflict with the Texas open meetings act. And section five five one point zero seven two, deliberations about rural property. City council consider purchase, exchange, lease for value of rural property. So at this time, we will go into executive at six fourteen. We have an open session and there are, there's no action taken.
How is that?
It is
Six thirty.
Six thirty. Okay, and that exhausts our agenda at this time. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion through the chair.
I will, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Hang the buck. Six thirty one.